I hereby bring the meeting of the Wyreka City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. And everyone, please silence your cell phones. Turn them off or silence them. Public comments, this is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action at this time during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Is there anyone that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda today?
Hi, Wes.
Asa, come down, please, welcome.
My name is Asa Bennett. I live at 3924 Anderson Grade Road, Wyreka. Forgive the hat and the t-shirt, the decision to come was an impromptu one. Earlier today, my wife and I had our five-year-old niece at Lower Greenhorn Park. And as we drove in, we noticed a grouping of people by the Greenhorn Grange. And I wondered what it was. The van had healthcare services and whatnot on the side. Anyway, we pulled up by the parking lot in park and got her out so she could run over the slide. And just began looking around as she was climbing on some of the jungle gyms and whatnot. And first of all, noticed that we were the only people at the park other than a large number of people that were either camping, sleeping, drinking, and whatever else at the benches. After a while we were there, wanted to see what the van was over there. Obviously, it was an official van. And went over and after speaking with Jessica Skillett, who is the lead for Siskiyou County's behavioral health outreach program. She was parked there in their medical van doing disease testing, HIV testing, exchanging syringes. I guess that's one of the only two locations that they're currently doing in Siskiyou County right now. And offering the drug that if you overdose on heroin, they offer that as well. So in case you use your needles too, figure so you can bring yourself out of it or whatever. But our issue was that we were at the second half of our nicest city park in our town, to which there was no families, no children, nobody enjoying it besides the people that were exchanging their needles, getting something to eat at the van next to it. And then we witnessed a couple of them go over into the bushes and hide out for a few minutes. I can only imagine they were using the new needles they were waiting for. And then proceed to go lay their stuff out on the grass and take a nap. A couple of the vehicles exchanged their needles and then went over to the one set of bathrooms that's still open over in the main parking lot. And the gentleman, the only other guy there was throwing a ball for his dog. And he kind of walked out of the bathroom rather quickly, so I imagine, you know, they were using their needles as well. They proceeded to just park in the shade there at the park and hang out. My issue is, you know, whether I see after doing some reading and whatnot about the program, I see lots of pros and cons to, you know, assisting people in continuing their drug problem or continuing to bring down our town with heroin and the homeless issue is that... Sorry, I didn't really have a chance to prepare anything.
It's okay.
There has to be a better place, say in front of the behavioral health building or somewhere more professional or commercial that we can set up this van or any other services that our town is choosing to provide the drug addicts or vagrants, transients, homeless, everything that seems to be an issue in our town right now than at our parks. Jessica Skillett seemed to think that, you know, she gets several people in from Hornbrook, Montague, the surrounding areas that are driving in, mostly in unregistered vehicles, two of them that I'd saw. They bring in their bag of needles. I sat there and watched for about 20 minutes. The half dozen of them that were staring there for a while, the only other people that were pulling out of the park, they proceeded to flip off and, you know, not really greet so much as you'd like to when you're coming into the park, just because people would stop and want to know what's going on. So some of the people exchanging needles chose to give them the bird. You know, whether it's a... There's plenty of empty commercial lots in town, something like that. If somebody with the capability can mow those down, park the van there. If they're going to do that program, have them do their exchange there. Don't invite them to come get fresh drug paraphernalia. Even how controversial it is, we don't hand out crack pipes for crack addicts. You know, I mean, it's kind of a two-edged sword to hand out heroin needles for heroin addicts. So if we're going to do the program, I would wish that we could find somewhere where they would do their exchange and not feel like they wanted to stay. You know, it's a nice park. You know, if you're going to stop there, exchange your needles, get something to eat at the van next to it, that kind of promotes just going on about the rest of your day, perhaps using, rolling out your sleeping bag in the park. There's currently an entire trash pile where several of them have been hanging out there. There's trash inside the seasonal creek that's right directly behind the grange. And when winter comes, all of that stuff will be flowing down to our waterways. You know, I just, there must be a better way to handle that than stationing it at our parks where our kids are and, you know, families that want to try to... You know, it's a tough world to live in, let's not make it any tougher. Anyway, I'm not that great a speaker, so...
No, good job. Thank you very much for bringing that norm. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to see the place moved to behavioral health if possible. I think that's a good idea.
I think we need to pick it up.
Yeah, I'd also like to hear a response from the police chief on the legality of everything.
It's a county program, correct, chief?
It is a county, but it's...
It is a county behavior or a county public health program. They gave a presentation here about two or three meetings ago that took up about half the meeting. And we too are really concerned about the location. We've asked about it in roundabout ways with employees and they said, "Well, that's where the, that's where the most people are." And I said, "Well, if you feed them there and you give them..."
Feed the bears and you give them that.
That's where they'll be, you know, I mean, if I put corn out, then deer will come in, you know, it's just the way it is. And I don't particularly like the location myself. You know, I don't want to diminish somebody's efforts to reduce the spread of HIV and hepatitis and other things that dirty needles cause, but I also don't want to lure them to our public parks either. We've worked with Dwayne and Matt, Mayor, and everybody to try and keep the parks free of homeless encampments. The city yard, the city crew comes down at our request to pick up trash and abandoned camps. We, it is every single day there. And to add to it, to it being a location that they now want to come to is really kind of disheartening. The COS campus just called me yesterday, the president of COS met with me and said that, "See, you know, their nice campus has become a cut through from Lower Greenhorn to behavioral health and other things there." So I think it's just a bad location. There's nothing illegal about it to speak to Mr. Shasky's question. It is a legal program. The bizarre part of it is, is when they give them the needles, they give them 10 needles at a time, and they don't just give them needles, they give them a full hype kit. They give them cotton, saline solution, you know, the whole thing to use heroin. And what is a heroin addict going to do when he gets a hype kit? He's going to use heroin. So they give them a card certifying that they got these products from a program. Therefore, our code section that we would normally arrest for possession of drug paraphernalia is gone because they have this, they pull this little card out and they say, "I got it from a drug program." And so normally we'd find somebody with a hype kit and they would go to jail. But if they got their hype kit from the county, they don't go to jail. So, and they're not, you know, the needles aren't stamped on the side of them, "I got it from the county." So now any needle that they get... And the thing is, is they said, "Well, that's the location that they're most coming to." If you poll these folks and ask them where they got their needles and you're not mean to them, they say they normally were getting them from Bymartin Medford or in Ashland. So if they can make it all the way to Ashland, they can make it to anywhere in town other than the Lower Greenhorn Park. And like I said, I don't want to demean the county's program, but we at the police department think it's a pretty poor location ourselves.
I'd say, thank you, with your permission, that we set up a meeting with Jessica, you and I, and discuss this issue. Because it's a big issue, we need to remedy the problem.
Okay, all right. I agree. So we'll ask staff to set up the meeting with the public health?
Yeah, we can do that.
And then we'll talk to them about changing the location. And as far as the food goes, it's my understanding that's not the county, that's local churches that are doing that. They have food and clothing.
Yeah, it was on hard demand today, just a burger deal.
I saw it. I saw it, I went by there today, too.
Well, after you have your meeting, I'd like to report back to the council.
Report back.
Because I mean, I really think we've got to push for a change in the location.
Yep, no, I agree. I agree.
Okay, thank you very much for coming and letting us know. I appreciate it. And thank you, chief, for your input as well. Are there any other comments from anyone? Okay, no one? Okay, we'll go forward. Item number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from July 19th through August 1st, 2019. We have a copy of that. Approval of minutes of the meeting held July 18th, 2019. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion that we approve A1A and B as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All ayes.
And I did see, if I can add something, I did see in the checks issued that the Montague pool program is a success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big success.
I'm going to report on that. Yes, it is. I'm excited.
I've seen that, too.
Okay, all right. Item number two, discussion possible action, adopt resolution approving requests associated with the special events known as the Wyreka Union High School Cross Country meets. And I know we have someone here, come on, be out. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Pamela Borg. Starting my 20th year running the Wyreka Elks and the showdown, so it's been long. And I don't know how many years Jim Effman did it before me, but it's our 20th year. So we have the cross-country showdown was a second meet that I added mostly for the middle school and elementary school programs to develop their cross-country programs at their school and also have a place where they can come and compete and not have to worry about running the meet that we were going to do that and all they had to do was coach the kids to run. So we kind of started it with that. And then we have the Elks invite later in the year, in October, because of the recent fires we've been having year after year. I've always said that Elks invite for the second week of September, but because of the fires in the last five years, I just wouldn't switch that to October. So this year I have the Wyreka Showdown on Friday, September 13th. We're going to start the first race at 11 o'clock. The last one will run at 2 o'clock. And we, I believe we had 248 kids last year at the meet.
Wow, that's impressive.
Yeah, and so I think overall with spectators, coaches and such, we were about 400 people there at the Lower Greenhorn, so that was pretty exciting. So we're expecting, I think I already have about five more teams than last year that's already committed to coming, so pretty excited about that. One from Brookings Harbor, so very excited. And then we have the Wyreka Elks invite on Saturday, October 12th. I've already been in contact with the soccer program, Northern Siskiyou Soccer, so I've already notified them about the two dates. I've been working with them pretty side by side for, gosh, I don't even know how many years now.
That's right, the middle of soccer season.
Yes, exactly. So they've put that on their schedule as well. So the Elks invite, pretty much the same number. I think we had 260 kids that competed last year at the Wyreka Elks invite. So again, we're kind of expecting about the same number with about 400 at the club down below, so very excited once again for that one. I believe you probably already have a copy of the map from the trails that we use. Nothing changes there, we're still using the identical trails that we've been using, so I don't see that there will be any issues there. I don't have any outside vendors coming in that I know of, except I have not had a commitment from the Elks Lodge yet. Yeah, that's correct now. From the Elks Lodge, if they were going to do a concessions there that day.
Oh, that would be perfect.
Yeah, last year they had another previous commitment because I changed the date because of the fire and the smoke. So anyways, I'm not sure if they're going to come in and do smoothies and burgers and stuff like that, what they've done in the past. So that's a possibility, but they'll come and get their required paperwork all out of the way regarding that.
Great. Varsity course.
Do you have any questions for me?
This says varsity course 3 a.m.
Oh, 3K?
Oh, it's a K.
Oh, I thought it was...
It does look like that, doesn't it?
Oh, that looks like an AM, I see what you're talking about.
I was going to say, you're going to have to talk to Carl about that.
3.1 miles or it's a five, five...
3.1, okay.
And little kids, 1.6 miles.
Okay.
The mayor's race is at 3 a.m.
The mayor's not going to make it.
Do you have a backup date if you have to cancel the September one because of a fire?
No, what I did last year, I moved it a week before the Wyreka Elks meet. And the problem that I have, not so much for the elementary meet, I could probably run the elementary divisions, but the high school meet, it'll be harder for me to run the high school division of the meet because all the schools have already set their calendars. So it's really difficult. I lose a lot of teams when I do service the date.
Well, we can't do much about the fires.
No, no, we can't. No, we can't.
Hopefully keep them at bay.
Yeah.
But as I recall, when you needed to switch today, we just worked with you.
Yes, yes, you guys have been just fabulous with everything, supporting the program.
We would do that again.
Yes, and the request is for a fee waiver?
Yes, if at all possible, that would be great.
I think that that'll be part of the recommended motion.
Thank you, and tell me in the resolution.
It's all I remember, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I want to add something to this before we...
Sure.
I'm all for this, if I get it wrong.
Oh, me too.
My thing is, there again, getting back to the park system again and the safety of this, I want to make sure that we have chief and city staff go and patrol this somehow before this event takes place and make sure it's free of any people that are illegally camping there and make sure it's cleared. This has been an issue in the past and it's been a big complaint from that, that we almost, you know, didn't do some of these meets because of the homelessness activity going on in the camps or in the park. And it's been a big issue with the kids and their safety. So I think we need to address that and make that part of this, that we, somehow we are there making sure that this is cleared out the day before. So I don't know what that entails, but...
Just a presence.
I think you just told the chief.
Yeah, it is.
Is that part of the motion?
That's going to be part of my motion, yes.
For about the last five years, I do have to say that I actually started a home course on the high school campus because of what's happening at the park with the camps. And, you know, my rule is none of my runners are allowed to run by themselves just because of the situation with the homeless camps. I was chased by two guys when I was out there on my own.
When was that?
About two years ago, yeah, so that was pretty scary. One of them chased me on a bike that he was on, so I just held, you know, went down the deer trails and went off-road just to get away from him. And then I know recently that fire that happened just recently over there. There, I happened to be walking in the park at that time and I talked to the cow fire, one of the officers there. There was a camp and I showed, oh gosh, is it Sue?
Sandy.
Sandy, Sandy, Cupcake Lady, Sandy. I showed her where the camp was and it was just directly across the trail from where the fire started. And I, you know, that was just coincidental. I'm like, okay, there's a tent there, trash everywhere, so Sandy was going to call the city and have them go remove that camp, which is still there as of this last week. And then there was another one just off the main trail when you come off the outbuildings and then hit the trail. There was one just like, I mean, from meet to norm, right off the trail, that was just all trash. So it's really scary when I'm putting, you know, girls and boys out there on the trails. And that's why unfortunately I just don't use it as much as I would love to because of the situation. We found needles in the grass. I actually, before we have our meets, I go and walk around the grass and try and look for that type of stuff. The Parks Department has always been really good about doing anything that I need them to do and so it's not anything, it's just gotten so big that I don't know, it's a manpower thing, you know. So I just go around and I do it myself. People on the bench in the bathrooms, I caught a girl, she's in the toilet with her head in the toilet, cleaning herself.
Oh.
Yeah, and I told her, "Excuse me, we have the YMCA meet that we were putting on that Y series." And I just asked her nicely and she was nice. She got all cleaned up and laughed in time before we had registration. But that's the other issue, too, first thing in the morning, they're all there, getting cleaned up, using the restroom, leaving a mess on the ground. Matt could vouch for any of that. Defecating right there on the floor. There was pee right by the men's door because the door was locked and they just did it there. And so, yeah, you definitely have your hands full with that one. But I try and, I thank you for your concern because it definitely is a valid one, though, keeping it clean.
Well, I just appreciate you pushing through and doing this for the kids.
Yeah, oh, definitely, definitely, that's what we're here for.
It's, both of them are very good against healthy, right? Kids outside, hopefully there's no fire.
And the parents chasing the kids around. Parents and coaches, I think one time I put, I had a GPS on and one meet alone, I was like six miles just...
Back and forth.
Like, hey!
See how healthy that is, yes.
I know. Well, thank you very much for your support over the years.
Okay, so now I need to get a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, adopt a resolution approving request is associated with the special events known as the Wyreka Union High School Cross Country meets, with the exception of adding that we have extra patrol prior to this event to make sure it's safe for them.
Okay, so I have a second, okay? And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your advance, it sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, we'll try to stop by and say hi as you're visiting by.
Yes, please do, that would be amazing if you would, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that, I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Great, wonderful, thank you. Okay, item number three, discussion possible action, response to the Siskiyou County Civil Grand Jury. Steve?
Yes, mayor members of the council, every year we have the opportunity to perhaps be part of the grand jury report. And this year we were a part of it. And I just want to...
But it was a good thing, right?
It's a good thing. I, you know, I sent you an email with the actual report in, which was very positive towards the police station. And in fact, the title...
I didn't mean to steal it from you.
The title, "The New Wyreka Police Department Facility, Fortress Worth the Wait," that is echoed in the, in the report a lot. And I know that some of the things that the chief has mentioned also came in there. There were a few little things where we, we kind of have a different view of some of the things, but in general, we thought it was an incredibly positive report. Now, they did suggest a couple of things and so we respond to the findings and recommendations. One of them was that we have some, some parking, because they looked at it, they thought, well, there's a little less parking there. Well, there's a lot more parking on the street there. So the chief asked Public Works to stripe it green and put up some signs, which is what the grand jury was recommending. And the green paint is out there and I believe the signs are ordered, I think, but I don't think they're out there.
And what will the signs say?
Mayor Parking Only.
Oh, heaven.
It'll, it's a limited term parking.
Limited term, like 10 minutes, 20 minutes?
I don't really know.
Police business?
It'll be the same as the other police departments, it said YPD Parking Only, it was a 15 minute, so...
Okay, good.
And there's a lot more parking around. So that was, that was one thing. The other thing they suggested, and you may remember this kind of thing from when we were going through the process, they suggested that we talk to the property owner to the south to see if there was an opportunity for future expansion. And we did that during the process and it wasn't reasonable to do. Subsequent to that, Credit Union purchased the property and they're planning to develop it out along the thing. So we did contact the Credit Union to see what they were, they were doing. Actually, we already knew kind of what they were doing because we had, they gave us their plans.
They're in motion, they're in process.
So there really is an opportunity to acquire the property. I did say, you know, if any changes, let us know and maybe we can have a chat. Very congenial, it's just they have plans.
Right.
And the other thing is...
Credit Union is growing, which is a good thing.
That's a good thing. The other thing to point out, too, is that it's always nice to have a little extra land to expand to at some point in the future for things that are unknown. But this, this police department was set up with the space to be expandable for a long time to come, including if we end up with some sort of regional dispatch, it's built into there. There was a discussion, in fact, I...
At the lego?
Two people to my right suggested, hey, maybe we don't, we have too many lockers for right now, but we ended up putting them in. So those are also expand, you know, into the future. So anyway, it's, it's a good long-term thing, but we are having the chief and the mayor sign a joint letter responding to the two recommendations.
So I'm going to make a call on a couple things. Parking, I was one of the persons that was complaining about the parking from the get-go, you know that. If anybody's parked in the front in those designated spots and tried, had a full-size vehicle and tried to pull out, you can't do it at the same time. Well, on their designated parking spaces where it's at, in front of the, in front of the police station, if you were to have those spots filled where there are, you can't do it at the same time. So if you were to have those spots filled where there are, you can't pull out at the same time, it's inadequate on that aspect.
Isn't that necessary?
Nope, not at all. I don't think anybody realizes that, but you gotta try it sometime and have all the vehicles parked there and it's, it's, so I, I don't like that, I didn't like that from the get-go. I complained about that, I didn't get any place with it.
Well, what's the solution?
There, I don't know, what the solution is, we're kinda past that point now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that the reality is that when you go out there and see where people park, um, you know, sometimes, particularly if someone is, uh, in a handicap vehicle, they might pull into those parking spots, but just about everybody that's.
Both on the side.
Well, you just park parallel on the, right by the police building, I mean.
Right.
I actually usually park across the, the thing and, and try to pretend that I'm a lot younger and faster.
Yeah, dodged a car, so, well, like, and I guess the one other thing too, I have a complaint about, it's like, these, those little things that we're, we're designating the area for, that's great and everything. But my complaint about designating the on-street parking like that is we don't do that with the public. And we've done that in the past where we've complained to businesses saying they can't do that. One prime example would be Dr. Pakoff when he was setting up his building there. We did not, at first, we did not allow him to put any other businesses there because, uh, we wouldn't allow him to park on the street. In fact, we sent, the city sent him a letter complaining that he had his employees, and this is before you guys were doing, so don't, this is before the staff that we have now, so let me tell.
And the council, by the way.
Yeah, and it, if our council, so don't take this personally, this was before. And so that's, my complaint about that is when we start designating, open it up for the police department, which is, we need to, don't get me wrong, it needs to be done. But now, we've already said that to other businesses saying, you can't use this for your personal parking, but we can. So we're, we're, we're not sending, you know, the proper signals out there saying, hey, we're better than you, is what we're sending, and that's, that's wrong. See what I'm saying?
Well, I don't think that we're better than anybody, but I'm not sure what the solution is.
No, but that's true, what I'm saying is, I know, there is no solution now, but I'm just, I'm just complaining about this because this is not right. What we, we did double standards on that, we say, businesses can't do this, but we can. See what I'm saying? It needs to be done, so don't get me wrong, it has to be done, we have to have on-street parking because we didn't allow for it to begin with.
We designate fifteen-minute parking, short-term parking all over the city.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's, there's green stripe curves all over.
No, I realize that, but not specific for businesses, there's a difference.
Sure.
Like post office.
Yeah, you got fifteen-minute parking at the post office, police station, I think those are important, like, functions, so I don't have to have any problem with that.
No, I just, I'm just voicing my opinion on how that is presented to the public. Because as a business owner, I know how that looks and how it's been presented to other business owners, so. And then, when we get down to the response, on response part two.
Responses, yeah.
Yeah, it says John, uh, grand jury is correct in the fact that our facility is situated on a corner lot that bordered on the east side of Fair, by Fair Lane. So that is, the, the verbiage on that is not correct, bordered on the east side by Fair Lane.
It should be west side.
Exactly, that should be west side, just so that's correct.
We're on the east side of Fair Lane, but not.
It's the east side, that's.
East side, Fair Lane, but.
But not, not the west side of the property.
Exactly.
All right, I didn't put that in there on purpose, Tony.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
On the north side of Davis Road?
That's, that's all I wanna, I just wanna state a fact and I'm good with what needs to be done, I just.
Oh, got it backwards there too.
Okay, any other comments? Do I have a motion?
I'm moving that we approve item number three, the response to the Siskiyou County Civil Grand Jury.
With the, with the correction of the verbiage.
Of the east, yeah, right.
True, yeah.
And we have a second, we have a motion and a second, to approve, um, the response to the Siskiyou County Civil Grand Jury as presented with the corrections on response R two. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, five oh, uh, four oh. I forgot, Paulson, I, okay, uh, item number four, discussion, direction to staff with possible action, I think this is Reda. Prepare resolution, or is this Steve? Prepare resolution designating reserves for pension stabilization for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and prepare request for proposals for evaluation of IRS Section one fifteen Pension Stabilization Trust Funds.
Well, well, okay, I guess.
They're looking at each other.
We're gonna, we're gonna tag team this a little bit.
I at least jumped in, so I was like, trying not to.
Yeah. So, um, so this is something that we did discuss with the Audit Debt and Investment Committee of, uh, continuing to look for opportunities to, uh, deal with our long-term unfunded liabilities, uh, similar to what we did with the health insurance that's, uh, post-employment benefit. And this is a similar proposal, uh, regarding, uh, the pension. And so with that, uh, I'll let Reda go ahead and.
Reda. So, um, one thing, um, like those of you, and I think all of you follow the lead of cities is, is the, um, challenge that cities are going to have in, in facing the future pension costs.
Spirit.
Um, for, um, basically the unfunded liability that's been created. Part of it, because as we've kind of talked about in summer, um, is the shortening, um, timeline that we have to fund the pension that, um, the actuaries did, they went from thirty years to twenty years. And then they said, oops, you know, our historic numbers were kind of off and we're like, we're underfunded than we thought. Um, and so they.
But that's also because they lowered the percentage.
The discount rate and then pensioners are living longer. So you kinda have, like, four things that are all going, that are all going the wrong way and the fund value, the fund being, um, fully, the, the pension trust that CalPERS has been fully funded. So you kinda have all these negative, um, valuations happening, which means that the, um, the percentage funding's about seventy percent. If it was fully funded, it would be a hundred percent. So CalPERS is, is taking measured steps and kudos to CalPERS in, in addressing the problem. I think the, um, challenges for cities is how to respond to these increases, um, effectively. It's not like, um, you know, things, well, it's kind of all these things together changing the valuation sort of thing. It's like, kind of, sometimes with the market, you know, your stock's valued one, one day, you know, at a hundred dollars and next day you wake up, you know, coffee prices in Brazil change and, you know, now it's worth eighty dollars or something. Um, you know, so there's the market volatility also going on and of course, you know, returns have been lower. Um, and CalPERS was re-elected to change it for years and probably should've dropped it more aggressively.
And prime rate just went down a quarter of a cent, which is going to impact us.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, because the returns, um, on the, the trust can, yeah. So, we kind of went back to, I'm gonna maybe do, jump around a little bit if you'll bear with me here. Um, on one of the slides, it's kind of, I'm gonna jump right to the first down of why cities are on the front line of pension reform and then kind of fast forward to page nine of that, what can cities do today? And, um, I kind of look at this as the way what we had done with the OPEB. We were faced with the problem of an unfunded liability with the OPEB. And we was like, well, we aren't gonna fund it all on day one, but what can we do today to kind of do that? And I, some of you may recall that we, we went, um, we started setting up designated reserves, um, and accruing it once we kind of had our three-year evaluation of like, um, we looked at the annual, um, required contribution that the actuarial said we should be putting aside, um, to fund that. And so we took some measured steps to, um, start, um, setting aside through payroll, um, each year's annual payroll to kind of start fund, seed, seeding the funds. Um, the good news, we just got our, um, last three-year actuarial report, um, and I'll make that available once they issue it from draft to final, we, um, on that. But from, going from zero, we're now eight hundred thousand, um, funded by the end of this year.
Oh, we put aside that much.
We have, and so we went from a, uh, unfunded eight point, one point eight million liability and how we're, uh, have funded part of that.
Good.
Um, so I, I think, you know, it, it doesn't seem like, um, it seems the numbers on the CalPERS pension seem large. They're in the, you know, about the six to eight million depending on, on, um, what the next valuation will be. But, um, measured steps and of course, um, that's one thing, sometimes it's just small, small, short steps and then also looking at opportunities. And so when the lead of city said, what can California cities do today? Um, they go through identifying nor, new sources of revenue, reducing OPEB claim benefits. Um, in our case, we're at the minimum, we're at the bare minimum as required, we, we didn't put any icing on it, it's just the bare minimum. And we're addressing that, um, review services and staffing model, um, we constantly do that through each budget cycle and each hiring position in this organization. Um, for that, um, and this one, you know, I, I think it's important to establish a rate stabilization one fifteen trust. Um, and/or UAL prepayments, um, UAL is an acronym for unfunded actuarial liability.
Right, so that's what we're doing?
I, I would like to, for, to bring to you what we took to the Audit Debt and Investment Committee is considering, um, setting aside some money and why I think we have, um, an opportunity to look at one-time money that we did designate for, um, the police station, perhaps looking at that, those funds. We kind of like swept them away and said, this is for this project, the project came in, um, under budget. And, um, there's probably about one point two million that, um, I would like to bring to you that we have a one-time opportunity to perhaps, um, shift this to a pa, pension stabilization trust. Uh, and, you know, it's not just California that's dealing with its pension liability, I think Oregon has, is dealing with it and, and some of their new tenants, um, may not receive, you know, what, what they've been, um, contractly felt that they would have, you know, um, for their retirement. So I think it's really a commitment, um, to, to, to see this at this point in time. It's kind of, um, money that we did set aside for a singular purpose and I think if we just shift it into a pension stabilization fund when we really do fall into, um, should we fall into, I don't say when, should we? I'm, I'm gonna stay optimistic because I think we're physically fairly conservative. I think we seize opportunities and I'm like, this is one opportunity, I think we'll go back and say, yes, we did that and it doesn't hurt right now. And then when it does hurt, we might have this opportunity to pay or augment our contribution through the pension trust, so.
Will this come to us then during the budgeting process?
Um, what I'm asking, um, right now, well, the pension, the, what I'm asking right now is to come to you at a future meeting. Is, um, designating, uh, with this year-end close, these reserves for the pension stabilization trust.
So don't wait for the budget.
No.
Yeah, it's not part of next year's budgets, it's for right now.
Right now. That's, the second layer of it would be, um, like with the OPEB, is to do our, our due diligence and looking at trustees um, to park the money with, that gives, um, a slightly higher return than what we can do internally. Um, and so the, um, one fifteen trust promised to hold around a six percent return. So you could put in that, let's just use numbers, that one point two million. And I, ideally could achieve a six, six percent, you know, five and three quarters to six and a quarter over time return. But, um, that would also help it. I think the one thing I like most about a one fifteen trust versus just shipping the money to PERS in the mega pooling is that we really can treat, keep track of our obligation and we don't get, um, mired in the ratios of the mega pooling from our pre-funding activities. And, um, I pretty, um, I strongly would recommend we put it in a pension trust versus trying to, um, prepayments to CalPERS.
So this is going to come back to us on a future agenda item for an action, correct?
That's correct, two action items.
Okay, two action items.
Right.
The one is the one point two million, what was the other one?
One is to designate the reserves and the second is.
And there's a RFP for adjustment management.
And at that time, we would enter into a trust, we would bring back to you a contract for a trust agreement and then I would shift funds from the city into the trustees account.
And you'll go over the risk at that point?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's, um, actually, there's two large, um, players in the state of California for these. Um, like with our OPEB trust that we have right now, um, CalPERS has a different arm that does the trust and so our OPEB is in, uh, sort of California, um, C E R T, California Employees Retirement Benefit Trust. And, um, that's performing as planned, um, and like I said, made big headway on that. Um, and CalPERS also is now offering a Section one fifty, one fifteen trust for employers, so it's still our funds. Um, and other agency in California that is marketing these, it's a for-profit firm and it's called PARs. And they also compete and so we, you would look at kind of the returns rates on that, so.
Okay, so this is a heads up? It's coming to us.
I'm seeking direction to bring it back.
Oh, you're seeking direction, okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Well, we talked about it on the audit committee and I think it's an excellent idea to prepare for the future because we have an unfunded liability.
Yes, we do.
And we need to do what we can to reduce it. And so this is an excellent opportunity and I'd like to most, um, propose a motion that we prepare a resolution designating reserves for pension stabilization for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and prepare request for proposals for evaluation of IRS Section one fifteen Pension Stabilization Trust Funds. And this will come back to us at a future meeting.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, the recommended, uh, motion for pension stabilization fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, four oh.
Pretty scary, some of the numbers that they're showing on there, I was like, oh my gosh, percentages of what you're gonna, oh man.
Measured steps, I think, will help us out.
Yeah, at least it's something.
Okay, all right, thank you, Reda. Okay, and Steve, um, we are into city manager and staff reports, so the city manager report.
Thank you, mayor members of the council, I've got a few things to talk about. Uh, one of them, uh, has come up fairly recently, although those of you that went to Lola, uh, may have heard about, Doris is interested in our, our retired, retired fire truck, uh, engine four eleven. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, contact, the chief has contacted our chief, we've looked at what the probable, um, auction value is if we go and, and put it out. Uh, we usually do that on all of the, um, all of the engines. So, uh, we were talking with, you know, letting Doris know about what that, that range was and in the past, what we've done is we've sort of estimated the range, nothing scientific about it, but at least it's based on some data. And then because they're in the county, um, we try to work with them at the lower end of the range. Um, one of the things that's going to cause this to be a very immediate thing is that they have two of their frontline engines offline right now. So they would like to move as rapidly as possible. I got an email right before this meeting indicating that they had, uh, agreed to what we thought the value was, was about seventy-five hundred bucks. And so we're going to bring back to you for approval, um, at the next meeting, uh, to, uh, work out, uh, a purchase arrangement similar to what we've done in the past. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's new information, literally, uh, other than, than Jerry, well, Jerry had something else he needed to do, like take care of himself, but anyway. So, that'll, that'll be coming up. Um, also, it's become obvious to me in the last few months that, uh, we need to do a, a better job of, of, uh, keeping council informed of what's going on with some projects, including some that have been, uh, deferred and we also have some, uh, decisions that need to be made about, uh, projects. And so I'm, I'm going to propose to the council, I'll bring this back again at the, the next meeting, uh, to start having workshops on the second Thursday of the month, we can talk about the timing and exactly, make sure that works, um, at the next meeting. But starting in September, it doesn't make sense to do it next week when fair's going on, because attendance would be light.
Yeah, from us.
So, so, yeah, exactly. So my thought was, was that we, we do it, I'm gonna probably recommend that we, uh, have such meetings in September, October, November, skip December. January's tricky because of the, how the dates work with the beginning of the new year, so I don't know what we'll do then. And then continue to have them through the rest of the, the spring, probably not the summer, but people have off. And in the past when we've done this, uh, we've usually, uh, scheduled them and then canceled about one out of, of three workshops, so. But, uh, some of the things that we're going to be, uh, wanting to bring to you are the ADA, ADA bathroom, we expect to get schematics so that we can take a look at that and make sure that we're all on the, the same page. We need to prioritize, uh, some projects so that we make sure that the projects that we're working on, uh, match up with, with where you are and then also let you know which ones we're deferring and why, and some of it's, um, staffing. Um, and, uh, we need to get started on our two-year budget, so that'll probably be at some of those, uh, those workshops. And there'll be other, other items as well, homelessness, uh, is probably gonna be out there to, to discuss. There's some ordinances that need to be updated, a whole series of them. Uh, we have, uh, some of the other things, there's a. We have, some of the other things, there's a, you recall the, and this, these are some of the questions that have come up lately that, that I realize we need to, to get back together on some of these things.
More discussion.
More discussion. So for example, we call it the minor street crosswalk, crosswalk project. There's been some engineering done, we need to talk about the funding for it though, because that hasn't been allocated. So we'll probably bring that back.
I know lots been working on that.
Right, uh, we replaced, I got a question about roofs and we have replaced the roof on the archive building. We're using some new materials that work pretty well in those kind of buildings. So we're testing that out and it seems to have worked. We've talked a number of times about the old police department building and quite frankly, we haven't moved forward with that. Although the EDC did get a grant for them to evaluate it. The kennel electricity, we have engineers working on the, uh, the electrical system. We could talk about that, but I don't have a, a, a cost estimate right now.
The electrical system for the PV?
The first thing on the kennel building is to make sure that, I'm sorry, kennel.
Yeah.
I'm slurring my words, it's too much broccoli salad. So, uh, so we don't have that number yet, but we are working on it. And I think next meeting with them.
Case engineering will be back up early next week to perform some additional electrical tests.
Right, so it's, we wanna make sure we do it right. It, at one point, the estimate was probably in the neighborhood of a hundred grand just for the electrical stuff. But they're, they think they have a different way of doing it, that I think the person to my left is the one that came up with the idea. So they're vetting it and it should be less expensive.
So the upgrade is going to not only help the animal control facility, but also the whole compound?
Correct, the idea was instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the transformer outside the service center.
It's for the whole facility.
But to break animal control off of that transformer, which, so that the, the load that's being taken now to run animal control comes through the panels on the service center. And on the other side of the fence, we have the wastewater treatment plant where we have large mains power. Over the last few years, we've decommissioned a few of those processes in those buildings that had main, big power to them. And so the thought was to, and why we move forward with your blessings and funding for the preliminary engineering base to have them take a, a good long look at additional power, extra power, so to speak, over on the wastewater treatment plant. It's looking good, so they're gonna come up this next week, throw some little meters on the, on the lines and fire up all the systems at the same time to make sure that we do have the load that they've calced out that we believe we have.
Should we watch for fireworks?
No.
Okay.
No, it would be about as impressive as the blasting for the casino program. It's gonna boom.
Our intention is to make sure that as a spectator, it would be very boring.
Okay.
We're in a good spot on that project.
Thank you.
And thank you for Steve's report. As part of Matt's report.
That's right, he knows, he knows what's going on there, so. Uh, we are running out of space at city hall, so it's pretty packed. And we are, we do need to do something here about the, making this into a sort of a conference table. And we need some help on that.
Yes, any of you that have tried to have a meeting at city hall, forget it, it has to be right here. And when you walk in here and you'll find it full of staff. It's like there is no place to meet in city hall, so we need to work on that, thank you.
That sounds good. Uh, we do have a new employee that has joined us, Luanne Myers. And she's a, is it fiscal technician?
Finance and administrative.
Yes, I, I, I sit corrected.
That's the one we approved.
Yes.
Yes, a while back.
So she's a good addition to the staff. We will have a project manager coming shortly. It's my practice not to release names until they actually arrive. I've always thought that's a good practice, so we'll introduce you to that later on. I also wanted to mention, uh, I want to kind of give an idea, I think, I don't usually talk about what's coming up at meetings unless I'm asking for it. But I did want to tell you that we are gonna have some presentations. Uh, one's on code enforcement and that's so that that person can freely deliver after that, uh, having given her report. And I think it's a good report, uh, layer on code enforcement. Our intern Riley will also be giving a, a report. As you are aware, when we have interns, we usually bill that in as part of their, their duties to come in and do a report. So we're gonna work that out and, uh, so. The other thing is, is that the legislature is going back into session, they've been off for about a month. And they're going back into session, I believe it's August 12th, I may not have the date right, but it's really close to August 12th, it's not that date. So I'm going to try to put together with, uh, we'll, we'll talk with Charles and then because the, the mayor also is involved in the legislative process, we're, we're gonna see if there's bills that we need to take another position on that perhaps we haven't done so far, so it's kind of getting down to that. So that will be on the agenda. I don't know that we will actually have draft letters ready, uh, it may just be positions. But we'll, we'll put something together so that we're on that. And just because it's the last, I can't remember the exact date, but basically there's like five, six weeks left of the legislative session after that. There may be times where, uh, we may get an urgent call asking for the city to take a position on something. What we've traditionally done is allowed the mayor to do that. I think she knows the rest of you pretty well and can, can take a position. But the gut and amendments sometimes will come up. And usually those are some of the worst legislation that come at us without something. So anyway, we'll, we'll have that. And we'll have some other things that will be on the agenda for your decision and take. And did I leave anything out? Uh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, staff, Matt, no report, I already gave your report. Chief?
Nothing that I could report at this meeting, next meeting, I have something to bring up, but I need to wait a couple of weeks to see what happens.
Okay, okay.
I would quickly mention the chip seal project happening this weekend, if you haven't seen that in the media by now.
Nowhere, it was in the newspaper too.
Did you see it? Did everyone see it?
Yeah.
Did everyone see what chip's going? Good, okay, so yeah, we're gonna be hitting the, the trap tomorrow and then.
I have been asked about it too.
Good.
So I took, referred him to go online and look, so hopefully it's there.
It will be positively, positively impactful.
Yes.
Positive impact.
And of course, the, the council knows that the chip seal project is like an iceberg. At the very end, you see the iceberg sticking out where the chip seal actually happens, but there's all the crack sealing and pothole repairing. And getting all the dirt off the roads and the, the stuff that sticks to it and all that sort of thing. So our staff's been working very hard and, and I meant to mention that that's one of the things that we really have prioritized is that to make sure that that chip seal project happens each and every year so that we keep up with that schedule. I haven't, I just realized, uh, highway three has also been something that we're working very hard to try to keep up with Caltrans on it. And the pool application, and Cindy's not here, but, um, she's probably resting. The pool application actually went into, it's not actually the post office, we're delivering it by UPS, but, uh, it, it, in the, pardon me?
Why?
There, the, the package includes not just the materials, but it also includes a flash drive. And so that was set out today and a lot of work on, on staff's part.
And it has to be there by Monday.
It has to be there by Monday, so.
Wow.
Not if it's overnight.
Oh, you did overnight.
Of course.
With return as he requested.
Of course.
Good. There's a lot of blood, sweat and tears that went into that, mostly Cindy's. But a lot of people worked on that, so I'm glad to hear it went.
Yes, they did.
The last one that I saw that where we just did, you know, we just did grammar type stuff. It looks really good, there's been a lot of work on that, a lot of people worked on that.
So we're excited about the application, but we're also glad it's.
Oh, my, yes, and I'm sure Cindy is too. And that, so he can get his staff person back.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna throw over a pool party Monday.
A pool party, yeah.
That's just me.
I'm gonna talk about the pool, I'm gonna talk about it. Okay, done?
Yeah, I'm done, again, yeah.
Chief?
Yeah.
Okay, Liz?
No ma'am.
No ma'am, okay. Rena, any, uh, any other reports? You just gave us one.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring, be bringing, um, how we're gonna be meeting some of the statements infinite wisdom has going to be leg, has legislated how we collect on our utility caps.
Oh, changes?
Oh, fun stuff.
Really?
So we'll be bringing some recaps of that for you.
Oh, boy, it sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll bring highlights.
Highlights, okay, that sounds good, anything else?
No?
No, no?
Okay, on the chip sealing, I saw the street sweeper going around today, uh, sweeping the streets that are gonna be chip sealed. But then on my way over here, I noticed there's already leaves on a bunch of the streets again. So are they gonna do some street sweeping the morning before they start the chip sealing on Friday and Saturday? Because the wind has blown more leaves out.
Look out now, the wind's blowing.
But the door hangers that we sent told the residents on those streets that we needed them to be off tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow and Saturday.
The newspapers said, yeah, so, or today.
Today.
We asked them to be off today on the door hangers. And a lot of them didn't, but we'll get the rest of it in the morning and then we'll have the street sweeper directly ahead of the crews when the chip seal crews come in. Yeah, it's imperative that it's clean, it's just like a paint job, it has to be perfectly clean.
Oh, absolutely.
Perfectly prepped, look good, right?
It's hard to stay, it can look good.
Yep.
No, the prep, the prep work's been pretty good, I've been watching that, the street areas and they're doing good on that, so. The only other thing is we got the Cisco Golden Fair next week.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Biggest event of the year.
You ready to volunteer?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask him to volunteer.
I'm doing tax work, trying to get them done so I can go on vacation.
I saw that.
Got some, one out today, but I got more in process.
Vacation, you take a vacation?
I need one.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, Debbie?
Uh, just to remind her to join and support the fair and there are still some positions available if you want to sit in the call your booth. Or if you want to do bartending with the friends of the fair.
Which starts on Wednesday, is that?
Uh, starts on Wednesday, yes.
I think I, I think I signed up for Friday?
Actually, it's a lot of fun in the call your booth because you just visit the whole time. So you can take a drink, you can give them a drink. No, you don't get to drink while you're working.
I take ass a lot.
Yes, they get so crabby about that.
Yeah.
But that's it.
I'm gonna have to check with you to make sure that the date's right. Okay, Twain?
Uh, just actually, a couple of questions. We, we're talking about, we're going back to the police station, what, whatever transpired, we've talked about this in the past, whatever transpired with all the, the monitors, the heating, air conditioning systems that were all there. We were talking about they were gonna go on auction, are we still gonna do an auction on that? I mean, I, I know there was a plethora of monitors that he left there.
Where, the old building?
At the old police, or no, the new police station, when they remodeled it, they had monitors that Todd left there. We had monitor heaters, there was old heating and air conditioning units, um, just a bunch of stuff. When we talked about this in the past, that we were going to have an auction, are we still auctioning?
Yes.
These things off, or what's going on?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
We typically run the auctions through our fleet management with Tim Shaw and when we have vehicles.
Right, I mean, I guess that's my question, is when, when is auction, when do we know?
When we have enough to make it worth it. We currently have all of those parts you speak of stocked filed at the city yard. And I know Ben would love nothing more than to.
I would imagine, get them out of here, yeah.
Get his space back, so.
Are you gonna do it online, or are you gonna have?
Um, a lot of the bidders do come in online, and that's why we switched to BidCal a number of years ago when Randy Horn was on his way up into retirement. And it works very well for us when we have enough and we throw it up and then we can piggyback on to say, you know, if she goes having one. So we just find the right timeframe and go for it, so yes.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious, because I was like, we're talking about the police station, like, wait a second, whatever happened to all that stuff that was out there and, you know, it's like, there's a lot of money sitting there, I'm sure that we could.
I thought maybe the chief was keeping a good eye on it, but it sounds like Ben is.
Ben is.
Yes.
He's probably like, he said, once again.
They held that off during, uh, during demolition and construction, I've never seen it again, so. I'm sure it's picking up a garage in the past.
Yeah, earlier.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, multiple bays.
Yeah, I'm sure it's hard to get rid of it.
If you notice the smile, the fact that he doesn't have to deal with it.
Yeah.
It's a make smile, yes.
Couple, a couple of other questions, yeah.
Oh, it's his, that's great.
I, I talked about before raising the baseline of the construction for improvements on infrastructure, you know, when we have our base. What's the next step that we need to do for, do I need to do something to promote this or what do we, what's the next step I need to do?
What are you talking about?
So.
I'm a little lost.
When somebody does reconstruction or remodeling their home, where our baseline to where if they have to do infrastructure repairs, like say do a side block.
Oh, for weather.
The baseline, so if they spend $20,000, then they have to.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that sounds like a great topic for workshop.
Okay, okay.
It won't be the only thing we talked about, those I think.
Okay, that would be good, because that's I, that's.
That's something we can ask to put on.
Yeah, because I've talked about it for a couple of years now, so.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda for workshop for this session.
And then one other thing I, I requested a while back, a couple of times now, is the cost that was entailed by the city from the fires that broke loose up on top of Green Horn, the two fires that broke loose up on top of Green Horn. The one now that was, oh, above the, um, on, I don't wanna say above the, the Trader Park oak. And then we had one of the, there's a few fires, I, I would like to get some numbers, what it cost was on our part to pay, you know, CalFire or whatever, how much it entailed on that. Because it's not, it's, I'm not, it's not attacking of anybody, I want it for my own reference for this whole homelessness going on.
Yeah, we need to know, because it's gonna come out of our budget.
And if it's coming out of our budget, this is something.
And I know we already owe some to CalFire.
Right, there's a, there's a bill that.
There's a bill we haven't paid.
CalFire is, but off the top of my head, so we'll get back to that.
If you could email me that, I would much appreciate, so this is the information I want to have, because this is.
We can do that for a, a workshop too, our first workshop probably, maybe.
It's a cost to the city, it should be.
Part of it's in the county.
That's probably something that I would just report out.
Shared examples.
Oh, report out, okay.
I, I don't, I, I mean, we could talk about the impacts of that at a workshop, but I think that the, just the information, that's informational, so.
Yeah.
I'll fire out an email, so I'll fire you an email.
Well, it should go to the whole council.
All of us.
Oh, no, it's just top secret stuff for you.
Of course, that exactly was what I was gonna say, is it, of course, we, we'll send out the information to the entire council.
Right.
No, this, I'm just trying to compile money information on what, what homelessness is costing us as a city. I mean, it's, it's, it starts adding up.
Oh, that's a good point, you're gonna use that at the homelessness coalition meeting, good for you, yeah.
There's a lot of things like that besides the, the police that have to deal with it on a daily basis.
Well, that's an attack too.
But it's a huge, I mean, that's something I, we, I need to have numbers.
Yeah, the percentage of time that you spend on it.
I know.
I did bring it up and, and I didn't really think about it, but yesterday when I was talking to COS, they made me aware that by the fall semester, if not sooner, they don't have much on campus during the summer. But they're, they are being required under some ed code or something under their hospice that if they have students that are homeless that have a vehicle, they have to allow them to sleep on campus. And they have to provide them a shower.
And provide them a shower too?
How are they gonna do that?
So they're working on acquiring campus right now to, to build a shower. And, um, they've asked us not to roust people sleeping in their cars on COS campus because they may be students. So we threw out, uh, that we might ask them for a student ID.
Yeah, I was gonna say something.
You know, they, they really didn't want us bothering them if they were stu, and I, I get it because they have this deal that they have to comply with, but it's just yet another thing that is, you know what I mean?
Interesting, and exit.
The, the right to rest.
Yeah.
I don't know, proposal is here.
Right to rest, yes.
So when you were asking us to, when you were asking us to clear the park out before YMCA, I, I technically cannot clear the park out.
I know, I know, I know, yeah.
Um, we'll select, uh, those who have their.
Oh, the YMCA, the Elks and the Y, right, there's two events, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we'll, we'll patrol it.
Right.
Per your request, but, um, within the law.
Right, no, I, I understand. I just need a safety on that part.
No, I totally get it, but there's a few things coming that are, are gonna cause, are going to compound on the homelessness. The, the school, the sleeping in their car on campus was kind of shocking to me, but that's a new thing.
I do remember reading that, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, I've heard of it too.
Well, it just opens up a whole can of worms on a whole bunch of other things then too. Unless you personally knock on their door and say, let me see your student ID, then the, that gets, word gets out and that's just gonna be a parking lot that everybody's gonna start shooting.
That's why we suggested to them, they're gonna take to their horn and decide whether they want us to knock on windows and ask for IDs. But as far as I could tell, that's the only way we're gonna weed out who the homeless student is that's actually going in there and who is not, and just using their shower facilities, just pulling in in cars.
Yeah, I guess that word gets out, that's gonna be the best.
Just another challenge.
Yeah.
Challenge, yes, anything else, anything else?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all righty, well, I just have some fun things to report out on the Montague Pool. So all of you know, because our pool failed, um, last year we started a program where we would give students through the police department passes to ride at the, the city paid the cost for students to ride a bus anywhere in the county to go to a pool. Well, we, we had some success with that, uh, but not as much as we'd like to see. Well, we, we had some success with that, uh, but not as much as we'd like to see. So this year, we worked a partnership with Montague Pool, um, with the, uh, the YMCA, uh, and as well as Stage, the county, and us, and Splash. We worked out a program whereas we got the kids and we, by the way, we were able to get the cost of the passes on the LTC, the Local Transportation Commission, down from forty dollars to twenty dollars for each student. And they signed up at the YMCA. They went in and signed up. And the YMCA got the parents to sign off permission. Uh, and then the YMCA provided a staff person who would ride the bus with the kids to the pool and stay there with them. We paid for it. That's something that was in our budget. Uh, probably like what we used to give to the Splash. But anyway, and we did that. And then, uh, Shasta Valley Rotary gave money as well as the sheriff's, um, uh, what was it, uh, Rheda? The sheriff has a fund and they gave us some money.
Oh, right, Lobe's Foundation gave us some funds.
Also gave some money for the kids for, uh, like sunscreen if they didn't have it and, and snacks. Because they were supposed to bring their own lunch and if they didn't, then there was some funding available for the kids so that they wouldn't be hungry. I am so happy to tell you that this program was so successful this year. And we had, uh, we had the program, not the week after school, but the week after that, so kids could settle into vacation. So middle of June until the first part of August, until the fair starts, we had this program going three days a week. They go down to, uh, the Stage office, catch the bus, their parents drop them off there. We have the, um, the YMCA there to check them on the bus. They've got, you know, they check them on, give them a band so that when they're at the Montague Pool, the, the, you know, the lifeguards, everybody knows who's, why Rika kids and who's Montague kids. And then we had an agreement with Montague that they would bill us for the end of the season, uh, which I think they did. You said you saw it, right?
So two checks, I thought. I haven't seen the Montague city check, city and Montague check.
Okay, they're supposed to bill us-
Okay.
-at the end of the season for the lifeguards.
I've seen the stage and the-
So, uh, anyway, so I tell you what, Montague, uh, mayor of Montague, as you know, I think, is Tiffany Lorenzini. And she and her city council have been so welcoming to our Waireka kids. It's good for their count. Um, they gave us a little bit of a discount. Other than the two fifty, we got two dollars. Um, it's good for Stage because for the bus system, it increased ridership where it was only one or two people or three maybe a day. Then they had twenty or thirty. They had increased the size of the bus. So that was, that was good. Um, so it was good for Stage, City of Montague, for the city of Waireka. Um, it, it was just good all the way around. So I am so happy to report how successful that was.
So how many did we have?
We had twenty to thirty kids a day, three days a week. Now, the first day I went, we only had twelve kids. We had twelve kids. But then after that, once people got used to coming and dropping their kids off, making sure there was somebody there to supervise them.
One more night.
What happens is the bus leaves here at ten thirty. They get there a little bit before eleven. Open swim does not start until noon. So what happened was Mayor Tiffany arranged to, to have a recreation program for that hour.
Oh, right, oh.
So, oh, and that's the other partner is the, Steve, help me, um, not United Way, the, the, um-
Opportunities or?
That's like the opportunity center. Not up there though, but they're going down here on Main Street. Anyway-
Goodwill?
Goodwill. So Goodwill has a program where they, you know, they train people. Well, they came out there and they did things like tie dye t-shirts and they did art. And they did, you know, braces and they did stuff in that big beautiful park right there on the corner by City Hall in Montague, between City Hall and the pool. So for an hour, actually for a half hour, forty minutes, the kids would do that. And then they would sit down under the trees, eat their lunches that they had brought. If they didn't have lunches, you know, we had food for them. And then they would all go in at noon when it opened after swim lessons. So it was just good all the way around. We had a really good partnership.
That was cool.
So that was-
What time were they brought back?
Really good. The, oh, and then the bus picked them up at four.
Oh, wow. Nice day.
Back over here by four thirty.
Oh, they had a full day then.
Free childcare.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's-
It was a good deal.
Supervised childcare.
It was good for the kids, the parents and everybody concerned. So I'm really, really proud of that. It's gone really well. Um, Siski Revitalization Network, we had a meeting here in town. I think I've told you before, it's on the first Monday of each month. And, uh, we've got about, ooh, I forgot about eight cities, I think, that's involved in that. And, uh, we've got My Town My Three, My Town Top Three, where we're putting together a list of places you can go, things that you can do when, when you're in each of the towns. So each of the towns works out their own agenda and their own curriculum and stuff that people can do. So we're working independently, but we're promoting each other. So we're working together. And the Siski Economic Development Council and Discover Siski is putting together great flyers with pictures that shows which town and what there is to do. So we're putting together a trail. So if you come to visit in Siski County for a week, you've got something to do every day of the week.
Will they be ready for the fair so we can give them out at the Collier booth?
I think so. We'll have to talk to Cory and Megan. Trying to think of who else is working on that. Anyway, yeah, I'll, we'll ask them. That's a good idea. At the C two C booth, that would be a great idea. Anyway, that's going really good. The next, it moves around. Our meeting was here in Waireka and the, of the new, um, owners, managers of, um, the Rex Club slash Empire Room. Had the meeting on the Empire Room side. Uh, and the last meeting was in Weet. So the next meeting, which is going to be next Monday, anybody interested? So, um, August fifth is going to be on MacLeod at Axon Rose. Oh, that little, new little, uh, restaurant there in town. Um, so anybody that's interested in coming, we can cartpool. Um, so, um, I met with a group of people this week that would like to form an art district, cultural district, or art area, or art group, as I was talking to Liz about. So they're going to be coming to us in the future to talk to us about their ideas. They've got some really good ideas and they also have some ideas for funding, uh, through the National Endowment for the Arts, a grant. So they'll probably be looking for just so, let our support from us maybe a resolution. Um, also tomorrow, I think I told you at the last meeting that we've been invited to participate on a White House Opportunity Zone briefing, um, a conference call. So we're, we've decided we're gonna have that here. I'm hoping we can get the space phone in here if we have enough seat.
Space phone.
Yeah, you know, the conference call phone. I know Matt's got one, Steve's got one. I don't have one. Anyway, uh, it's so, uh, it's gonna be at eleven o'clock. So it's twelve one, two o'clock Washington DC time. Uh, there's mayors from all over the country that are gonna be on that. And there's a, there's, I will send you all out the agenda so you can determine if you would like to participate. But if you would, be here at eleven o'clock tomorrow. Okay? Um, and I'm excited about the fair. I love the fair. So every year, so I'm, uh, volunteering in the Elks booth, hamburger booth, C two C, Friends of the Fair, and, uh, just really looking forward to seeing everybody at the fair that we don't get to see all year.
Yep.
It's a fun time of year. It's one of my favorites. That's it.
Art Hops tomorrow night?
Oh, Art Hops tomorrow night, starting at five thirty.
Yes.
And the Chamber of Commerce is having, um, uh, people in at five o'clock tomorrow afternoon at their new office on Minor Street.
Oh, good. I was gonna ask that.
Yes, everybody should be there. They're moved in.
Yeah.
They don't have a lot of furniture. Yeah, they don't have a lot of furniture, but they are moved in. So that's-
I haven't been down. Have you got signage yet?
No.
I don't think I have any signage.
No, they're, they're going to take advantage of the, uh, Minor Street facade.
Oh, are they?
Well, we would pay for half. They need to apply.
Right, yeah, they, they need, I, I don't know if, have they submitted an application?
No, not given or everything.
What happened to the sign they had? We had, um, it was on Broad, or one was on Minor Street before.
The wooden one?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know if they're planning to reuse something. That's not, that's not-
They still have to apply for a permit to put it up, right?
Well, they have permits to put it up and then you also have usually engineering.
Right.
Ah, the engineering.
Please do not let the sign-
Engineering now, yeah.
Don't put up a sign and it will fall down.
Don't, yeah, don't, don't fall on anybody on the street, particularly if we prebated half of it. We don't wanna get sued.
Our liability. Okay, and that's it. Anybody else have anything? I think we have closed session.
That is correct.
Okay, so if no one has anyone, anything else, then we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for coming.